The prerogative of having unnecessary quote-unquote absences can impact the accountability of a particular school.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. No question? No? So that's the overview of the accountability system. So that's how it grows to become, you know, a percentage, but it's based on all the number of points we received in each one of these categories. So, and as we're gonna start looking into some graphs that are associated with how students did academically in the achievement test, I think it's important to look at how many students were very close to the threshold to be cut, to go from one level of achievement to the next. That's important because what I did in that graph there, I just chose to take nine points out of the score and before it tripped into a new level. So when we look at, this is all students grades three to 10, because now actually, that's another thing too. Moving forward, we are gonna be able to compare all the scaled scores from grades three to 10, because the grade stand now is the same format as the legacy was before. So before we could not compare those scores, now can start making inferences from grades three to 10, because the scaled scores are the same. So in ELA in math and science, students who were in the range of 461 to 469 score on the MCAS, which is not meeting expectations. So those are the percentage of, you know, four to six, 4.7 to 6% on range of students who with a few more points would have been in the partially meeting expectations. In that band, you have even a greater amount of students. You have about 205 students who in ELA had received nine more points on their MCAS scores in ELA, they would have been meeting expectations. And the same as mathematics, 217 kids and 23 in science. So you have, you have, these are the students that got in a little bubble that sometimes we call, that is, that is the students that were very close to getting to the next level. This is important to know, because as we start looking at the bar graphs that we're gonna see moving forward for ELA math and science, you're gonna see sometimes that our data somewhat flat, or there has been some variations, not that significant, depending on a subgroup. So I think it's important to keep in mind that there were, as a band of students who were very close to the threshold, but didn't get there. Now, as a result of that, if the slide before, when you had those numbers, if, for example, in one particular school, in English Language Arts, the achievement was last year, let's say was 500, and this year was 498, and so that means that we decreased, so we got a zero points. But should some of those students had gone beyond the threshold, we would have gotten maybe one or two. So those are the things that we always keep in mind to know, what is these pockets that could perhaps, something that we're gonna pay attention to and look at, who these students are, and what was the main reasons perhaps, that they have not achieved the next level of rating, to make sure that we understand who they are and what their needs are, and make sure that we continue to work in that regard, is just moving, the entire population moving forward.
Do we also look at the groups that are low on the range to make sure that they're not sliding back? Because you could have the opposite happen, where even if people jump to the next, others fall behind or further back.
So there are several things that we look into it, but one of the things is that the state already prepared for us, even though it comes a little later in the year, is the bottom, the lowest performing quartile, right? So the bottom 25 percentile, who are these students? And so we already kind of collated that data to some of the other information that we have to understand, are these the same students? Or these are maybe perhaps different students? Are these the same students that our teachers are understanding there, they struggle academically for whatever reason? Are those students within our radar? So all these things are, is part of the, you know, digesting the data more properly to understand, again, we are one year behind, this is a summative data from last year, but it's important to know who they are today, where they are, and are they receiving, and do we continue to see maybe the presentation of profile of these students academically are the same? Are they struggling, or is something that we need to pay attention for some students who need greater intervention? So this is all part of the thinking process right now, in analyzing where these students are and what their needs are. Again, this is a one metric that we use for, you know, for student achievement, but is the metric that we get, you know, evaluated on. So we pay attention to those things, because those are relevant as well. I mean, there's so many other, you know, assessments that are created in the classroom level through teachers and not different, all those systems that we have in place to continue to have formative assessments of students. But this is important data to understand, at least identified by the student, who are they, where they are? Are these students who are needing help right now, or students who are academically, they are producing results? So all those things are, is part of our hospice right now. So again, so that's a critical, there's a good percentage of students there that could be beyond the 500 threshold, that could be into meeting expectations, so we're gonna be observing who these students are as well. So now, this is, so now it's gonna start into the bar graphs. So this is the grades three to eight altogether in the aggregate, and as you can see, this is, we can compare that, because that's the three years of the same test. And you look at the ELA and the math, we had marginal movements there. You know, it's some comparable and flat, some gains and some losses here and there, but it's pretty, in the aggregate, this is sort of a, it's marginal changes there. When you start breaking that down into subgroups, the students with disabilities, the same idea, we have a slight improvement in ELA, but we had a decline in partial, partially meeting expectations in mathematics. So we have against a movement there. Again, different cohorts of students, different, you know, measurements, but again, it's something that we have to pay attention to, who are these students and what their needs are. Every student with a disability has an educational plan, that's another thing that we have to kind of pay close attention, because that's, the dead plan is sort of the roadmap quote-unquote, that, you know, is the plan working to, you know, provide the students the best, you know, alignment of services and supports, right? So those are the things we have, we pay attention constantly. When going to English learners, the same idea, we had some forward movement there in ELA, and we had some decline, decline in math, again, partially not meeting expectations, or partially meeting expectations. The same idea, these are students who are English learners, and we, students with English learners right now this year, which is a new regulation to the state, we're having a success plan being developed for some of those students, not all students, but some of the students. We are looking to collate the data to see if the same students that are associated with this outcome is the same students that perhaps now the state has identified as needing a success plan. So all these things are important for us to align, to see if we, in a, not just in the aggregate, but in the larger picture, but in the small picture, at the classroom level, are we talking about the same students or a different cohorts of students? And the high needs group. And the high needs group, to, for a reference to everybody, is our English learners, the students with disabilities, and the low-income students all combined. So that's the three subgroups that are combined in the high needs group. Again, we have some forward movement in both, in ELA and math, but again, it's not, there's nothing significant there, just some movement forward. Here is one of those occasions, one of the first occasions that I'm talking about, that we don't compare the two graphs, right? So the graph on the left is for ELA math, is the first year of implementation of the Next Generation MCAS test, is a set of results that we're not comparing to the left side, which is last year in 2017. It's there again, just for informational purposes, and we don't make comparisons, but when you look at the, what the outcome is for the new test for ELA math, I think it's very consistent between the two subjects, the distribution of levels of achievement. With students with disabilities within the MCAS test, the same idea, if you look at the two, just the right side graphs, you see the distribution there is similar in terms of the levels of ability or levels of achievement in ELA math, it's quite similar than the all students with disabilities. And same is applicable to the high needs subgroup. If you notice, I didn't have the English learners here in this subgroup, is because it's 20 or fewer students don't get reported, so that's why we don't have a graph for the EL students. Science. So in science, again, grades five and eighth was the first year also of implementation of the Next Generation MCAS. So again, the top, so if you look at that three columns there, the first column is grade five, on the top is 2018, which is the legacy test, and the bottom is the 2019, and we don't compare those things, but again, fifth and eighth grade, new set of tests and new set of standards on how students are achieving in each one of those grades in science. And on the right side, you have the 10th grade, there's, so the, in 2019, we did slightly better altogether than last year. The proficient and advanced last year was a 75, 79%, we were 80% this year, so very comparable to last year's results. And in grade 10, which continues to be the legacy test, it will be there for maybe another year or two.
Next spring?
Next spring, go ahead.
2020.
Good. In terms of, again, same idea, the science and students with disabilities, that's where we have experienced some significant declines in grade 10 primarily, as compared to last year. And the other two, grades five and eight, again, we do not make comparisons there, but it was, it's something that we'll have today, this year, gonna be our baseline data for moving forward for grades five and eight.
Marco, and this is kind of an overarching question, but it's specific to that slide.
Sure.
Now, with a specific slice being grade 10, right, you have different kids moving in. So how much does that tell us about the program versus the students, or the combination? I mean, how do you parse the data when you have a different cohort moving through the grade levels each time? So it's almost like, it's hard to compare this data, because you have different people taking it, so it's not, there's no control here.
Right.
The only control is that the program's, and even that is changing and evolving constantly. So how do you separate program needs versus student needs when you look at some of this data?
So for us, I think that the approach here is looking at where the gaps in the standards that weren't met, right? So I think one of the biggest, you know, components of our job now moving forward, as we look at, okay, if a student's fail, or there's a decline in performance, we need to look, go to the analysis and look into what were the areas, were the questions or open responses, that they did not do well? And look at which standards, if there's a pattern of standard, there were not, if there's a pattern of standards that were not, somehow it became an area of difficulty. Then our job is to go backwards and say, is this part of the standard that perhaps was covered later on, after the MCAS was administered? Was it was covered but not enough, or wasn't covered at all? So those are main questions that we have to analyze and say, why is a particular cohort that was such a fluctuation from previous years, or vice versa? So we need to look at, dissect that to make sure that, as we look into that data, we're seeing that the particular, say, particular standards, or particular, you know, focus in questions, or particular questions, or alignment with the standards that did not meet the, you know, the needs of the students, that point in time. So we need to understand where the gap, why the gap, and where the gap is, and understand why, how did that happen? Because I think the part of the work that we have been doing now for the last two years, and if you recall that graph with all the curriculum mapping, that's another piece, right? We're looking at creating these maps, and then create maps have to go back into the classroom. Same as when you think of math, math had some new standards for, in 2017, that were, you know, reviewed within the scope of mathematics. So we need to catch up to all that, and then it has to go to the classroom level. So all that, it takes, you know, some time, but I think for us, the most important part is where are those gaps and why the gap? Is that something that wasn't covered? We cover wasn't enough? Maybe we, it was different timing? You know, there were times in the past history of MCAS, that we discovered that, you know, the alignment of coverage was so skewed, that students were never gonna be successful, per se, because the materials were being covered in total, different times. So over time, the maps is supposed to align with the standards, and if you align with the standards, align, you know, eventually with the MCAS, that the coverage, the material, the knowledge, will soon will be successful in the test.
I would imagine, and you can correct me if I'm off base here, that it's with a new scoring structure and the test structure that it is currently in, it's only been it for two years, it's difficult to project and even dissect data, because there's no historical base on it. I mean, we can look at old, but it doesn't really tell us a story on it. As you have the cohorts moving through, they age out of the pie chart. So would time help kind of craft this, you know, years of this aggregate data help craft better pictures towards whether it's, you know, challenges with particular student populations versus programs that we should look at? I mean, I know we have other metrics that we track with things, but as an additional data point, I would imagine that time will help kind of create a better picture versus just the two years of data, you know, to really tell you, is it student and student learning, or is it program and what we're doing to support at that level?
I think it's a holistic approach that we have to look at, it's not about, you know, we taught the student, didn't learn, right? It's about what exactly was taught, what was the MCAS, was that aligned with the standards? Was that aligned with the scope and sequence that we have? Was that covered enough? Did students master that? Is that something that maybe is, it's depending on a sequence of lessons, is that something that you teach by, it's quick, it's not deep enough, right? So sometimes we approach this instead of this, right? The depth. So all these things is part of how we evaluate. We don't go compare it to previous years, we need to understand what happened last year. Dissecting last year, we inform us better if our practices for this year is in alignment with expectations, or something that we have to do different, or do more, or different. Because again, it's dissecting last year's data to be able to inform this year's practice, if necessary, change and realign accordingly. Looking at previous years, you can always compare historical data, but that is, that is part of the accountability piece. For us, what matters most is students who took the test last spring and didn't do well, a cohort of students of a particular grade level, and then from that particular grade level, we go to a particular school, particular school to a particular classroom, all these things matter, and when you look at the picture. So every one of these portions will be important elements for us to analyze and see, was there continuity of services, you know, was there, you know, a classroom that, you know, there were substitute teachers too often in the classroom? All these things matter. It's not the totality of the D N result, but we need to understand structurally, are we delivering solid, you know, materials, solid information? Are students mastering that content to be able to then eventually do well in MCAS? Again, it's, MCAS is the the end-all kind of thing, it's that one metric, it's summative, but informs us in practice, because what goes on in our classrooms every day is very important, is mostly on point, but we need to also always calibrate, did we miss something? And if we did, what do we do? If we didn't miss, but didn't get retained and produce results, why is that? So all those are questions that we're gonna be tackling as we are already doing it, but we're gonna continue to do so.
How do we use, I assume we use other district data to help inform our decisions? So in an area of weakness that we've identified, or an area of opportunity to improve, there may be other districts who are performing well, or have seen improvements there, do we do any type of benchmarking, kind of understand what they've done to move the needle in those areas? Or is it more internal looking?
I don't think we go looking for those solutions. I think every district has a different challenge, a different profile, different formula on how they, you know, they kind of get things done differently. I think of, I think of my, back in my years in Worcester with the Level Four schools, when that came about, and the entire holistic intervention that had to take place in order to do, to transform schools in a three-year period, right? Almost like an unrealistic kind of target by the state, but that was the accountability that was set back then. So you're looking to, you had to reinvent teaching and learning, so, and for that, you had your time to do this total restructuring from A to Z, in every direction, you could have autonomy to change that. For us, we look at where the gaps are, because we're not restructuring everything, where the gaps are, and to the gaps, we analyze internally. Because whatever is perhaps some, maybe some remedy for a different district may not apply to us, may not be something that is needed for us, or is a resource that we maybe have that they don't have, or vice versa, in different practices. I think the best way of looking at this is looking internally, what our practices are, what are the things that, now, if there's a particular area that we feel, gee, we're puzzled here, I think the curriculum directors are very versed in kind of networking with their colleagues about potential different ways of tackling a problem. But I think for us, it's more like looking at internally what we have accomplished so far with curriculum alignment, how we're instilling that in classrooms, how we're supporting that with the coaching and model, and continue that conversation about how do we look at this data? Not as a, any way of, way, shape, or form punitive, but a way of capturing a moment of time where we measure students, and that moment we felt that certain things didn't produce well. Keep in mind too, that is a test, right? If you take a test, if you're not feeling well, chances are you're not gonna do well. If you are a third grader in front of a computer pressing buttons, doesn't mean that you reviewed everything before you pressed the button, right? So that's, those are all variables, right? So that we have to contend with every time. But along the way, we have a lot of assessments that are done at the classroom level by the teachers. Then we have some other instruments that we use for, to look at student, you know, student advancement proficiency in different levels, through different, you know, forms of electronic version or not of testing. And again, that's how we grow, and how is looking internally, how can we do better for the next cohort, if we miss something, if it's something that we need to recraft or readjust? So that's our best remedy at this point in time, looking internally as opposed to comparing ourselves with anybody else.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
In the past years, if our teachers say, oh, this year they didn't cover, they didn't pass it on the test, we prepped the kid, it wouldn't come up, or whether they focused smartly, so that can also skew things. Have we seen that in the past two years, how consistently the tests were done in three to eight?
And that's what we're doing right now. We're looking at every single one of those areas where we felt that, you know, a significant number of students did not do well in a particular question, a particular theme, and how much of that was actually covered, or not covered, or maybe totally missed, right? Because there's something that wasn't covered that particular year. So those are the things that we're analyzing right now. And if that's what, if that's one of the things we realize right away, then how do we start looking to make sure that those classrooms will be equipped, that the particular grade will be equipped with, you know, covering that? It's something that, it's transformative, every year we're gonna have to look into that. So English learners, for the science, the same idea, we have, we don't compare the left and the right graphs, but again, that gives our representation of where the English learner is fair compared to, you know, to English in, I'm sorry, just in science in different grades, grades five and grade eight. The high needs group, sort of same, same kind of profile, the left side is just, you know, the top portion is just informative only, that's the first year for the science and the fifth and eighth grade for the high needs group. And on the right side, you have the grade 10, who's also showing some decline in some areas. So that's again, gonna be our area of focus for us moving forward. Now, in, so underneath all these results, there are some highlights. And these highlights are things that are important for us to also look at, because when you look at later in the aggregate, you look at these big bar graphs, and includes everybody in the district. But what are some of the highlights that I think it's worth, you know, kind of a capitalizing, because those are some areas of success for us? So in grades three to eight altogether, 51% of the students met or exceeded expectations in ELA in grades three and four, having the highest proportion of meeting exceeding expectations, which is 57% and 53%. In grades three, they experienced an 11 percentage points increase in the average scaled score since 2017. It is the highest increase of all assessed grade levels, so that's the greatest climbing in scaled score since 2017. And in math, students in grades three, four, and seven had the highest proportion of students meeting exceeding expectations, with a 59% at grade three, 55 at grade four, and 50% at grade seven. Now going just, going a little more granular into some of the schools, some of the highlights, Esfari Elementary School had 53% of the students in grades four meeting exceeding expectations in math, a 7% increase since last year. Forest had some very major gains since last year, 74% students in grade three met or exceeded expectations in ELA, a 16% increase since last year. 56% of those students in grades four met or exceeded expectations in ELA, also a 10% increase from last year. And 72% of the students in grade three met or exceeded expectations in math, a 6% increase from 2018. At Mulready, we had 54% of students in grade three who met or exceeded expectations in ELA, a 7% increase from last year. And 65% of the third graders in Mulready Elementary also met exceeded expectations in math, which is a 5% increase from 2018.
Just a quick question on that, do we track, or is there tracking on the movement of three to four, and whether those percentages change? Because it's the same group of students moving forward.
Right. So the longitudinal data that we have to look at, that you can look and compare cohorts, right? You can get the grades three, to the four and five and move that. And one of the things that we do, which typically takes a little more time, is to see how many of those students continue to be the same students in that class, right? So what the rate of mobility there, that perhaps some of the students are new students, we have to kind of disaggregate that data a little bit, to understand how that cohort is compared to the same one, the original one. So something that we work from time to time, in looking, just looking at the climbing of a particular grade.
Right.
Yeah, but we do that sometimes, yes.
Thank you.
At Quinn Middle School, we had 49% of students in grade five meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, a 2% increase from last year. Students in grade five through seven demonstrated as a cohort, an increase in meeting exceeding expectations in math from 36% to 54%, which is unaligned, which you just asked there, Adam. And 50% of the students in grade five met or exceeded expectations in science, which by the way, in the scale score, they superseded the state. So fifth grade was, did a great job in science this year. High school, 51% of the students in grade eight met or exceeded expectations in ELA in math, in ELA in math, in the 10th grade, 64 and 60% respectively, met or exceeded expectations in these areas assessed. And grade 10 average scaled score superseded the state averages in both ELA and math. So we did very well as well, superseded the state, which we had done in the past as well. So before I go into this chart, which is also tiny, Frank, sorry, there was, so the, for the public maybe looking at some of the graphs that we presented just up to now, there is, most of those graphs, there is a discrepancy of a one percentage point. Sometimes the bars add to 101, sometimes adds to 99 percentile. So Kathy Provost interacted with the state in multiple ways, and found out that there's a, you know, there's the rounding way that they, formula that they have, and they aim to fix those over time, so they're working on that. Now, when it comes to this graph right here, this is a new graph, this is not what you have in your packet, and that's another question that arose earlier, is that the 10th grade primarily was adding up to about 200% as opposed to 100%? And we found another glitch with the system. This is, by the way, all these data charts that are presented here, I didn't create them, they all came from the Edwin Analytics from the state. So you just, I just copy and paste, that's ready for us. So, but there were issues there. So this one particularly here, just a quick story. So if you go into, well, you need to have, you know, passcode, but in Edwin Analytics, when you access that report, what you see right there is what you have. If you download that into an Excel spreadsheet with the same data, the data is different. And that is where one of the discrepancies that we found this afternoon, that the data does not, the data that I provided to you was based on the Excel that I had exported from, you know, from the state, but that is actually a picture of the PDF that comes first. So in any regard, there was some discrepancies in how the data was presented by the state, and they actually, they're working on that, and they'll probably continue to review and revise that. But the next two graphs are about the school, the G P, the G P S, the S G P, the student growth percentage, G P S is transportation issue, there's another whole, I'm not gonna go there today. So, which I was just talking to Patty about that, that's why it's in my mind. So the S G P is another way of looking at how students are growing over time, that is related, but also, this is more like looking at particular cohorts of students of the same profile, who achieve a particular scaled score at different times, that's what it is. That's what it is. So we continue to see a variation of very high growth to very low growth. The very low growth is the yellow shade, and the high growth being the, very high being the darker green. And one particular event here that we, that caught our attention is in mathematics, in grades five and eight, which had the greatest proportion of students having a very low growth. It's been a little while since the last time I read the whole, all the specs from the state about the calculation of this. But there are times that the high achievement test, you know, the test scores, the scaled scores, don't have to correlate to the growth. One thing can be low, the other thing can be high and vice versa, and then not being so directly related to it. But it's something that we are looking to understand better, what that discrepancy, but what that picture tells us, that grades five and grade eight had such a wide band of students who are on a low range of growth percentile for this year, something that we're gonna be exploring as well. Oh, that's it. So now I entertain your questions.
I wonder if there's, if it's the same factor, since you point out, you know, grade five and eight in math, but grade eight also stood out in English in ELA compared to all the others, they were all very parallel, except for grade eight. I was wondering if there might be something specific about grade eight for both.
Well, grade eight had also a significant 35% of students were in the very low growth range, right? But didn't, wasn't the same as the grade five. You know, grade five was 21% as opposed to the 53%. So again, it's, we will be looking at this data to better understand some of the reason behind it. But again, those are, you know, things that we look at, but to, for us is going back to the test itself, what parts were, we did well, what parts we did fairly well, and what parts we missed the mark and why. That's gonna be our biggest, you know, questions to be answering.
Marco, just, you know, the grade five and eight thing, just as a question, as a question on that. I mean, we've had grade eight in the high school now for a better part of 20 years. And I understand, looking internally, to kind of dive the data, are there other districts that have a similar setup, grade distribution versus physical locations? And I wonder if there's any data to pull out of that, to see if that is something to look at, as, you know, with an eighth grade being a major, you know, jump physically in there. And then the same thing with grade five, now we've had a couple of years of it being at a different school. I just don't know if there's any other similar setups that are like Hudson in that regard, and whether or not that's any, there's any telling data to look at, something like that.
I would have to research how many school districts have such a configuration, which is not plentiful. The most popular one is seven through 12, because that's more prevalent, but the eight to 12 is not, it's not a prevalent configuration. I would have to identify those districts first, and then to maybe do a quick comparison in DART, you know, like the state, you know, tool, to see how much, how close they are to offer some comparisons to Hudson. Because if it's a district that's totally demographically different, it's kind of, it's a moot point.
I know, I know, it's hard. I mean, it's just, it's just curious to me that they stick out in a physical jump in a building as well as it, it's just, it's just.
So I think your point that, I mean, those are transition years, those are something that's already been considered and discussed at length, and looked at programmatically. I think, you know, will continue to be.
Yeah. Because those are, that's the first thing that kind of caught our eyes was that, transition years, right? But is that a factor or something else that has influenced those scores? So again, I think when we look at these type of data, we have to be very careful not to jump into conclusions, and looking very thoughtful and very deeply into the why behind the picture, because we don't wanna, you know, say something that is, you know, it's alarmist, that which is unfounded, it's just, but again, we have to look at every facet, you know, to educate ourselves on how the best way of looking at that picture and making inferences that are factual and actually constructive to the, what to do next, not just about for the sake of looking at, so.
That leads well into my next question.
Sure it does.
What are? Anything, whatever.
Yes.
Let me piggyback on that.
What are the next steps to kind of do the deep dive you're talking about? And then kind of what's the output of that? And how do we get visibility around that? Like what did we find? What are the big, big things? Obviously, there are gonna be a lot of things you'll uncover, some smaller than others, but kind of, how do we frame that up and stay on top of that? Because I'd be interested to understand kind of what the key drivers are that have been identified, that we think are key drivers, and what we're doing to kind of address those.
Sure. I mean, have the curriculum directors and the principals here, we are already looking into that. I think every facet, we're gonna be different stages. We are looking at, we already met and look at some particular reports that are gonna be very crucial for us to be using, you know, not just as, with the administrative team, but also with teachers and with the IOT and kind of expanding the use of that. Again, we want to be careful. If we don't have all the answers, we'll make sure that the data is introduced in a way that's productive for the conversation and for the action steps moving forward, you know, especially, particularly when it goes down to the classroom level. It's looking at data to say, what do we see? What inferences do we make? And what are the things that perhaps should be our next steps, you know, as opposed to be in any way, shape or form punitive in nature, right? Because you can look at the data at the district lab, and you can look at the same data at the classroom level, right? So we are, we look at that very carefully in a way to say, the data that we are analyzing here have meaning and value, and what the value represents to us, and as a group of administrators, and then to teachers, and how, and what to do with that. I think it's, so we already started that process, and we'll continue to dive into different facets of that. I think the curriculum directors have already been, you know, very involved in that, in looking at, going deeper into that, because along the way, they're gonna use this data to inform their department meetings and things that they do throughout the year to inform instruction as well. So it's not gonna be just one big discover and dump that discover out, it's just gradually looking at all the things that we can discover right now, and how much of this is attainable for us to develop conversations at the classroom level, and at the building level with the principals as well. So it's gonna be, gonna be staggered in terms of, you know, what one does. You know, the principals will have a certain responsibility and depth in what they do, the curriculum directors will do the same, and they will continue to kind of layer that. And we also, part of, if you recall, part of our district improvement plan is to improve the use of data. And that is, it comes as something that we create routines and practices, not just force one to do. So part of what we're doing is creating sets of data and getting data to be part of the conversation for the purpose of building up that structure within the district, that we are data-driven and with a purpose. And when we look at data, regardless of the data is and looks like and feels like at any given time, is for us to sit down, analyze, and look at, you know, take that data and construct something out of it. Inform next steps or improve the practices that we have, so our students continue to advance academically. All that is part of the things that we're gonna be doing. So there'll be multiple layers. As we develop more and more the IOTs in our schools, it'll be part of, one of the routines that they will have is looking at data, not just MCAS, but any kind of data, because if you look instructional practice, whether it's content or pedagogy, you need to look at the data as well, to see how much of that is influencing the, you know, the scores or the results that we're getting. So there's a lot of output, but we need to see the outcome as well. And the outcome has, ultimately, it has to be the student achievement. So we're, it's gonna be a work in progress for a long time. And at the same time, as we develop, you know, like we have, you know, we have Galileo as one of the, you know, the new problems that we have at the middle school primarily, as we look at that data and start getting reports from that, how much of that compares to some of the results that we have a particular cohort of students in the classroom, right? And how much of that is students who are, you know, that are exceeding academically, those who are in the 25 bottom percentile? All that means something contextually then to give to a teacher to say, this is a picture, right? How much are you working with this picture as well? Because knowing that the teachers are working in the classroom every day, providing the curriculum, doing what they need to do, but then there's all this data that needs to kind of inform that without just interrupting, but to just create a momentum that will enhance their teaching, you know, and the learning practices, as opposed to just being a deterrent or a distraction for the teachers as well. We need to blend those, to braid those very well, so we can kind of, again, the data practices, inform instructions in a way that's not to interrupt, but is to enhance teaching and classroom practices. It's an art.
It's hard work. A few years ago, I pulled down all the MCAS data and trended it over time, and there are very few districts that stood out in terms of driving improvement. It's hard work.
It is.
And that's, that's one reason I kind of asked the question about other districts, is there stuff we can learn from them? Because there are very few, and this is the old test, new world, I totally get it, but those, there aren't many that do it well, so are there ways to leverage? Their programs might not match perfectly, but they might have structures we could, systems and structures that we could maybe lean on, or take pieces of that might fit that we wouldn't think of otherwise? And that's kind of where that earlier question.
And some of that comes organically too. So there are many times where we are involved with different districts, we're doing different types of work, curriculum and otherwise. There's, there's a lot of things to learn from colleagues, so I think we take advantage of that as well. It's not, you know, every day, but there are occasions where we interact with other districts, and they are best practices there that are appealing, and then we copy, you know, we borrow, because it's, you know, it's there to be borrowed.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Clearly, that's something we care about, we'll all be discussing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so next, the subcommittee reports. We don't have any policy meeting?
We meet in two weeks.
Two weeks, that's right. Okay. And I'll just note that we do have a building in the grounds, a subcommittee now, a meeting scheduled for near the end of the month, to start talking about what to do about this poor building.
Old man.
Yeah. So next is the student presentation.
Thank you. My name is Samantha, one of the community council student reps to school committee this year. My counterpart Samantha was here last week in my place, I'm very grateful to her. She spoke last week to you about color cycle, the Crayola program that Hudson High is currently completing. And when she brought it up at our meeting last week, I believe, she said that there was, there was a suggestion thrown out to possibly talk to the other principals of the elementary and middle school to sort of implement this program across all of the schools. And Mr. Marderos very kindly said he could help us reach out to the other principals, so that hopefully we can get them involved, as they use most of the markers in our district. She also spoke to you about the activities bulletin board that we're hoping to put up, and we have found an area in the cafeteria that we hope to use, but obviously, there's a lot of other parts that go into that, such as cost and who would put it up. So all those moving parts are getting figured out right now. The past few years, Hudson High has done educator remark program, and after doing surveys and things after last year, we've decided to alter it and do an activity around Thanksgiving, where students can write notes of thanks to their teachers on like little turkeys, so it's festive. And then we are hoping to put them up on the windows that lead to the cafeteria as you walk into the school. And this would also be a fundraiser as well, so students could write two notes for a dollar, be a great way to raise money and build our school community. Obviously, community council would review all the notes that we put up, so everything goes up on the windows would be appropriate and kind, right? And we're also hoping that if that goes well in the fall, that we could do it again as the year comes to a close in May for Teacher Appreciation Week, so that we can end the year on like a good note and express to our teachers how grateful we are for all of the work that they do. This week at Hudson High is Spirit Week. Yesterday was Around the World Day, today was Character Day, tomorrow is Decades Day, which is always the most fun, and Thursday is Red and White Day. Thursday is also the Homecoming pep rally, which starts around 1:15. And then the Homecoming football game isn't until Friday at 4:00 PM. But the Spirit Week and the Homecoming rally are always a great way to sort of build up our school community and bring everyone together, all of the grades. The Homecoming dance, however, has been moved to later, things were getting tight for time, so we decided to have it in November, November 16th, instead of this weekend. But we're doing penny wars for this Spirit Week, and it's been going really well, there's a lot of competition. No one wants the seniors to win this year, so they're trying to sabotage our grade. Again, this is just another activity that we like to do during Spirit Week, so that we can make Hudson High like a very united and fun environment to be a part of, no matter if you're an eighth grader or senior. And the proceeds for, from penny wars would hopefully go to another water fountain, like the one that community council put in two years ago, and that would go down in GPOD, and it was a big hit, two years ago when they put it in. So it would be really great to get another one of those. Junior and senior classes now have advisors, we're very excited about that. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Flynn have graciously stepped up to fill those roles this year. They have been meeting with class advisors in the past couple of weeks, and they are meeting with junior officers this week. But they have already secured a venue for junior prom, which was a big, if we weren't sure how that was gonna go down. But the date will be May 15th, 2020, so that is all set. Community council, last week when we met, we talked about getting an electronic marquee for outside of the high school, as ours is just a little bit run down. And Mr. Marderos informed us that he has some funds, but he's not sure if that's what they're supposed to be used for, and we have to look into what the actual cost would be to see if those funds would fit the price of putting in an electronic marquee. As the school year is amping up, Math Center is starting after school between 2:00 and 3:00 PM on Tuesdays for any student who is struggling in any math class and is looking for extra help. It happens on Tuesdays, which is a day that teachers have meetings, so if you need to stay after on a Tuesday, there are lots of very intelligent, kind students who are willing to help anyone who needs math help in the library. It's a great way to interact with some of the older kids too. Mr. Marderos is holding a principal's coffee this Thursday at 6:30 PM in the library, which is a great time to ask questions about what's going to be happening this coming school year, and get to know our new, the new head of our building, or just walk with him, I guess, too. Next Thursday, next Tuesday, sorry, October 15th, Hudson High is doing a blood drive from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Unfortunately, this will be Hudson High's last blood drive, because the Red Cross is suspending mobile blood drives, but it would be really great to, you know, support this and do one last good deed while it's still occurring at Hudson High. It's been a sort of thing that we did every year, so. And Yearbook Committee has begun work on the cross of 2020's yearbook. We have picked a cover, and we have decided that the deadline for all senior photos and senior bios have to be in by October 31st, so that we can really start putting them into the yearbook, and hopefully get things done by our first deadline in November. Really, the biggest concern I would say in the student body right now is ARC. We're very happy that we now know that things are, you know, occurring, they're in negotiation. But students are really hopeful that it will happen, they really enjoyed it last year, and would very much appreciate any update on the progress of those negotiations, because it would really impact our academic lives, and it had a very positive impact on us last year. If you have a question, that is all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done. Yeah. Moving to matters for discussion, we have one item, it's the discussion of the 2019 MASC resolutions. So we are presenting the resolutions, which will be voted on at the MASC conference in November. As opposed to last year, when we would just vote on it the same night, we're giving a chance to present them tonight and have discussion about them, and then choose to vote on them at the next meeting. So assuming that we're gonna support at least one of them, since we.
Don't be so sure about that.
I'm against it.
Adam and I were just talking before the meeting for a minute, and one thing I'm surprised by, looking through some of these, I guess I'm not surprised by it, but it happens every year, where I feel like some of these are just way beyond kind of what I personally think are school committee issues, and go probably further than I'd want MASC to are school committee issues and go probably further than I'd want mask to focus.
Do they listen to Glenn Kuchar and what their charges?
And I know in the past, we've, we've talked about kind of that happens and how it's up to everyone how they want to vote. But for me, those items, I'd rather keep them focused on things that will have a direct impact on education and students where some of these maybe would, but very many degrees removed from direct impact, probably.
Steve, since you were the one who wrote up the resolution on transportation that we submitted.
Yeah.
Were you, out of curiosity, are you comfortable with the revisions that the committee made?
Yeah, the only additions they had was they added the language around mass general law, chapter 71.
Section 70, right.
And I looked at that a little bit, and it doesn't cause me any hesitations. I wanted to go back and look at it in more detail because it's legal speak and, yeah. It didn't seem, I know sometimes like mask will throw in, they have an agenda with some of this stuff, and we'll throw it in. And that was my concern when I first saw that they had edited it. But after reading it quickly, I didn't have major concerns. I mean, I, I thought some of them were pretty good.
Yeah.
And could definitely support them. Some of them appear to be a little bit more philanthropic in nature. Personally, I think that they're good initiatives, again, to Steve's point, with a limited bandwidth across all of mass, mass, you know, what should we focus on? You know, direct impact things, in my opinion, are higher priority for voting affirmative on.
So I did want to ask for your feedback, Dr. Rodriguez, about, you know, resolution two where they're talking about actually proposing to eliminate the MTEL exam for licensure.
I, I think MTEL has been a big issue in getting really dedicated, qualified people to pass a test. A test is defining one's ability to have a license. I think it's, it could be modified, you know, if, if must be there, it could be modified. Could have a different slant of expectations. But I think in my, my experience with a, with a number of educators who are quality people, dedicated, would be an absolutely outstanding educator in the classroom, cannot get the proper licensure because they don't pass the MTEL test. And typically is the part, it's the, the, the writing part of it, which is, you know, if I recall back a few years now that I took the test, but, you know, it's heavily into, into, into grammar, into executive text that you have to reorganize. It's things that are, I don't know how relevant that is to the profession. I rather see, you know, greater emphasis on, or perhaps content and other things that are pertinent to teaching and learning to adjust to practices for our, the students that we have in front of us as opposed to this technical sort of facets that are just impeding one to have a successful career, not only personally, but also do the children benefit from that individual just because of tests do not allow them to, to have a licensure. It's, and it's, it's very also prevalent when you look at, you know, the title that's pertaining to educator diversity and professional licensure. It seems also that there's a prevalency on, on number of people of color who cannot pass that test. And then one, one kind of a, you know, sort of a suggest if the, the test is any way, you know, biased in any way, not in content, but in format. So, you know, again, it's, there's, there's a lot of opinion out there. But just knowing the, the number of people that I know personally who did not, who did not pass this test, I find this is a detriment to the, to the, to the, to the need that we have today in having professionals in front of our kids who truly have the calling to be teachers. Not anyone can be a teacher. I think it's, it's that calling piece. And it's just that you have to have a personality, a wish, and that, and that, you know, that permeates what you do every day. Not everyone can be an educator. And, and those who can, who wants to be, sometimes cannot be because of the licensure piece. And everybody knows that a license does not make a teacher, you know? You could have all the licensure but not teach well. So that, that's also, you know, true in, in, in some areas. So I think it's important to, to have a balance. If, if it is necessary to have the MTEL, either have it modified or out altogether and concentrate on the areas that are more appropriate for one's licensure, that perhaps is the content pedagogy. I, I think that is probably, and then I think force is also that our pre-service training colleges and higher ed to be able to do an enhanced job in preparing teachers with the pedagogy and the content to just be successful in those tasks and be able to then retain a licensure. That's my opinion.
So I can tell you about it since clearly I've taken it, and you probably have your own thoughts about it as well.
Hey, mirror Marcos.
Yeah. Mine kind of do, too. So if you want to be licensed from pre-K to 2, you still get tested from birth to grade six or grade eight. But you're only going for a pre-K to 2 license. And you're only being taught pre-K to information. So that right there kind of echoes what Marcos said, by changing the test around. Personally, I found what you learn from birth up was beneficial in many ways because you're learning about where they're coming from. But anything beyond, let's say, third grade, if you're teaching a second grader, maybe fourth grade, it's not your ballpark. So that was, and I know many who...
Yeah, but that's typical for all licensure exams, I would say. All professional licensure exams are very similar in nature, whether it's a construction license, accounting, you know, CPA license. You know, you got to know this, but you only really know this, and you only know, and you only do that. It's, it's very similar in a lot of ways.
But this is preventing...
No, I agree, but no, but the professional licensure, and again, I'm not trying to argue one way or another, but it's, 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 it's an issue of testing in general for professional licensure. In this case, it's directly in school district, but it's the same in, from accounting, professional engineering. I mean, it's, it's across the board for all sorts of professional licensure is that the breadth is often grossly exceeds the required knowledge to be successful in, in the profession. Not to say I don't support, I haven't really thought a tremendous amount about this one and how it impacts Hudson. But I think that's a, that's a knock on every professional test for licensure, in addition to the MTEL.
It's also interesting that when you go to get a vocational high school license, so if you want to teach engineering or early ed or anything like that, you have to pass either their test for vocational license and do, I believe, it's pass two tests instead of four. MTEL's a four test for most. You pass the reading and the writing for vocational, but then you have to do another test specific to whatever you're going into. And then you have to write lesson plans. The lesson plan part, I would find more beneficial for a teacher license than sitting down taking a test. So it's very, and they both come from DSE. So it's just interesting that they have two very different standards for being a teacher.
Do any of you, because you guys seem much more well-versed in this than I do. I was a little surprised, and I'm curious if there's data that support the diversity angle on this. Because I was a little surprised where this ultimately led, having read through the different steps in it. And I was just curious if you know of any data that...
I don't have data, but they, they exist because it's, it's prevalent. It's prevalent. I, I think of, you know, it's not a problem here in Hudson, perhaps yet. But I think as we continue to emphasize the need for Spanish and Portuguese teachers, the dual language program that we, we are engaged in planning for next year, we're going to be hiring people who are primarily from either Brazil or Portugal because that, you know, that's the, the easiest to find people. If those people now need to take the MTEL, even though some come with a visa that, that supersedes that, but eventually if that person needs that, that person may have a hard time with that. So, so, and then, and going back to my years in Worcester, is, is from, from principals, you know, to assistant principals, to a number of teachers who cannot advance themselves because they cannot pass a test. And these are people who, you know, the quality is just, just that test, it becomes the barrier. And I think, I think if, I'm sure DSE, if you were to look at all the people who have applied to take the MTEL and have not successfully passed, and disaggregate that data to see what ethnicity and all the factors that are associated with this diversity you're talking about, I think is absolutely huge.
Yeah, I think like most standardized tests, you'd see an implicit bias.
Yeah. Yeah. Indeed.
Any other comments or questions? When are we going to, are we voting on this in the next meeting? Is that the intent here?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so for, Dr. Weitz is not here, but, you know, for anyone who's not familiar with the process here, we're, we're voting to see, to kind of direct how our delegates at the meeting should vote on behalf of the committee, which I think is just me, or were you going to be there for the delegate?
I'm going to be there for some.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, it would be kind of directing us how to vote on, on behalf of the full committee. So, yeah, we can vote on that next week, or next meeting, excuse me.
One second.
Right. Okay, so then we'll set with that and move to matters for action. And the first item is approval of the FY '20 budget stabilization plan.
So as, unless you have any questions, how we left this last time is that we provided two different scenarios on how to utilize the balance that we have from FY '19. You had scenario A where we split the difference of that positive balance and apply that. You marked that for FY '21 and '22 equally. And scenario B would be to front-load and take care of the, the carryover needs for FY '21 and have a greater amount of expected carryover for FY '22. So my recommendation was to go with scenario A, where we split in half and be able to have equal opportunities for should any type of issue happen. We have ways of dealing with the unexpected expenses without jeopardizing the, the actual budget that we have at hand. So that would be my recommendation to you.
Any questions, comments?
I mean, I'm in favor of scenario A as well. I think it's a more conservative approach, the, you know, to, you know, to be able to deal with the, you know, spread this out a little bit and to be able to have some, some flexibility along the line there. I think scenario B, while it's always fun seeing a big fat zero at the bottom, is, is, it may, you know, it may be a little, you know, hasty in terms of, you know, trying to spend it all or trying to put it all in here. I agree. I'd make a motion to approve, move forward, scenario A.
Seconded.
Matt just walked in, so I'll just let him know that we just had a motion and a second to approve. Before I call for the vote, so you know what you're voting on. So all those in favor? Is that approved?
Thank you.
All right, so the next item is approval of the Quinn Home and School gift to the Hudson CPAC Best Buddies Program, in the amount of $2,000.
Before you vote on that, I just would like to recognize Cheryl Lengel for the work that she did on behalf of the, the Best Buddies in accommodating all the needs of this fundraising and transfer of money to be able to support the Best Buddies program at Quinn Middle School. And it's been, you know, hectic trying to get all this, these informations lined up and sequentially done. So thank you for, you know, helping us out and, and making this, you know, onto the agenda for approval so we can move on with the process. But it took a lot of, a lot of maneuvering about all the, the, the needs and, and step that we needed to take sequentially in order to, to achieve this, this, this step right now. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to quickly echo that, that I know a lot of folks were involved, from parents to home and school, to CPAC, to administration. So to me, this is a good example of how a lot of different groups can work together to kind of bring a program in the place that will help the students ultimately. So it's great.
Absolutely.
If I could just say a big thank you to the community for all the fundraising that the place, you know, to support this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Motion approved. Second. Okay. All those in favor? That is approved. And I can thank you on behalf of the whole committee. Do we have any items of interest to the school committee?
Already did their fund run on, I believe, Thursday. We initially asked for $20,000. We're still starting getting our numbers in, but we have raised and are keeping about $35,000 of that.
Wow.
Yeah. Which means that we raised a heck of a lot more than we asked for. And we raised more than that 35 because they obviously keep a portion, but...
It is, I know that with Farley, the, or the, however many years you're involved with the program, you get a larger percentage of the over. At least I'm pretty sure.
I'm not sure about that, but I know we've been, this was our fifth run with them, so.
Because I know that one of the programs, I think the Farley one, that the, the longer you're in it, the more you get of the cut.
Yeah. I'm not, yeah, it was, we were blown away. So I have to thank everyone who donated, who was a part of it. Yeah, we're blown away. So we're going to have a very nice shade area for our playgrounds.
Absolutely. Okay. So I have just one area, and we, I kind of brought it up a little bit earlier about the absenteeism. And I want, I, and to go along with the, the resolutions, I'm curious to, to see if there's an opportunity to dive in and see how we can segregate a little bit the absenteeism at, at a change level where we have to, you know, obviously, chronic absenteeism is an issue, and it has all sorts of metrics that are associated with that, you know, for underperformance and, and setting, you know, kids up for, you know, the challenging, you know, academic career. But I, I think it's, having it lumped in with, you know, with other absences that aren't necessarily a chronic in nature, but more just happen to hit a threshold and how it impacts both the schools and in a lot of ways the students as well. I'd like to see, and, and I have to do research on it, but how we can have more clarification on this. And if there's opportunity for her kids who end up traveling or are sick to, to be able to have, you know, make up portions of that to credit back to, to this absenteeism. Because it's a very stiff ultimatum as a metric, in my opinion. While the intention is very, you know, good, I think there, there's opportunity to refine it to make it, to make it really target what we want to target, which is making sure that kids are in the classroom. And if they can't be in the classroom because of a family reason or, you know, other reasons, that there's opportunity then, for them to earn that time back in some way, shape, or form versus it just being a guillotine type of metric that, that is set upon, you know, all school districts. So I, I'm, I'm personally going to look into it a little bit more and just, you know, bring it to the committee as, as something to entertain at some point in time to see if there's opportunity to refine the, the DSE standard to meet the intent of what it was there for, which is for the chronic absenteeism.
So I think I'm reflecting what you're saying. So I have, I have two, two, no, I answer two comments to offer. In terms of Hudson, so we are reviewing our attendance policy. And our attendance policy is not just the policy, but all the procedures and guidelines that are within the student handbook. We have been working on it. The plan was to bring that to, you know, to, from a parent's first and then the, the subcommittee on the 22nd, and that's not going to happen for multiple reasons, but we are working on it. And primarily, working on the specific piece of what, if an excuse, an excused absence, how does that play out to student success and the ability to recover? So that's something that we're working on for Hudson primarily. The other piece that I think about is that we are paying very close attention to how we are coding the student... we are coding the student's absence before they go up to the state, you know, through SIMS, because there are different categories of chronic absenteeism that can be waived, quote unquote, depending on the code that you use for DSE. DSE won't look at those, the reasons for it, they're just going to look at the code. So our coding is going to be, have to be in a pristine shape, but looking at students who are chronically absent because of hospitalization or major illnesses, the work that we do with them, tutoring and allowing them to continue if they can, counts as time on learning, so therefore then they're out of school, but they're not be coded as, you know, being truant or that unexcused absence. So we are looking at all these pieces to make sure that every, every support system that we have in place will be exercised to minimize the impact of the outcome, which is that, you know, the target, you know, that the district has through DSE according to the numbers that we upload to them. So, so we are working on those two things. I think then related to that is your wish to look into what's the, perhaps the mechanism and perhaps the fairness behind that accountability piece, because it's very easy for DSE to say, no, we're going to reduce absenteeism so that therefore I'm going to penalize you, so if I penalize you, do something about it, right? So it's kind of all, it's counterproductive to finding ways of alternatives to make sure that the students are being successful academically, are getting mastery in a particular subject towards graduation, whatever grade you're in, but at the same time, allowing for those who cannot be physically present have an alternative way of showing mastery of the subject and be able to then continue their course of studies in a satisfactory period of time. So all these things are part of our thinking. There's a lot of moving parts on it, but it's something that we are analyzing, because we do have some, our regulations primarily at the high school level that counters that practice, encounters that, that, you know, mission that we have, that everyone's going to be successful with us, right? So we need to kind of look internally at our own internal procedures, and that's what we're doing very carefully and doing in a way that involves a large number of stakeholders to be able to then have a particular voice associated with what we present to the school committee when it comes in front of you.
Yeah, and that's great to hear, and I think the intent is not to circumvent the rating, because, you know, it's there for a reason, and the intent is valid. I think it's just, I think it's just, it was set, it was set without a lot of direction, which is, yeah, which is not, which is not atypical for this kind of a thing, but I think the, again, it's important to capture it because it has direct impact to student learning. However, there are ways to, like you said, master a subject without physically being there.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Quick question, Marco. I'm going to put you on the spot, because you mentioned next week...
You never do it.
You were going to have the superintendent session that was going to cover with parents to go over some of that. Is your intent to still have that session with the different topic or...
Yes, so student discipline is still going to, is on target to be there. The one that's no longer on target is the attendance.
Gotcha.
Okay, because it's just, it's just a little more complex, that we need to kind of, you know, kind of tease out some of the details before we say, okay, these are the things that, you know, we are contemplating in making adjustments to the policy, not so much, but the procedures that goes into the student handbook. That's the one that's taking a little longer for us, but we want to do it thoughtfully and want to do it in a way that's going to be impactful in either way, in looking at our rationale behind why we're making the changes that we're proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the parent form regardless is on, you know, it will happen, we're going to be bundled with one theme, so, you know, in addition to all the topics that we can talk about, because the parent form do not have an agenda typically. This one, we're going to have a quick presentation about the student discipline. That one was, we are on target.
Just really wanted to give a plug, so you have to...
Absolutely, thank you.
The date and time.
Yes.
Place.
So Tuesday the 15th, 6 to 8 PM, at Hudson High School F101. Hope to see you all there.
Race next.
Anything else?
Steve?
No.
Well, okay, then we have no need for executive sessions, so we are open to a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seconded.
All right. All of them in favor? All right, this meeting is adjourned.